I'm having the Commission's Citizen Advisory Committee meeting for Monday, June 14th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, with the justal of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nice to see everybody on the Commission here. Welcome back after our brief break. Welcome, folks. Nice to have you. Sue, would you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Cavaller.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schraven.
Here.
And Chair Barker.
Here.
Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I'll have a motion approved.
And second?
I'll support.
And is there a discussion? Seeing no discussion, Sue, would you give us a roll call on it then?
Commissioner Cavaller.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, which was April 12th, 2021? Regular and closed meetings?
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
And is there a discussion? Sue, roll call vote then, and do we need two roll call votes?
No.
Okay. Roll call vote done, please.
Commissioner Cavaller.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Thank you. Is there any public comments or communications concerning items not on the agenda? Sue, do you have anything?
I don't think so.
Seeing none, we will go to old business. There is none there. Our new business is, first one is, A, a public hearing for 746 and 728 West Main, Benton Baker rezoning request. And generally, what we would do is have the applicant, and in this case, it'd be Brian, Benton, if he's here, or a spokesperson, to just come on out and tell us what you want to do, basically. And I would ask you to do for both the, or all three, actually, the rezoning request, site plan, and special land use. Just give us an overview of what you want to do. Introduce yourself and all of that, please.
Yeah. Do better. You're the type to go on and make your call first.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's fine. Just give us your name and address and go from there.
My name is Kyle Wiskert. I'm from Land and Resources Engineering. My home address is in, is 1850 Hopegan, near Rapples, Michigan. And this is Charlie.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Jeffrey, the manager of the viewership, of the day-to-day operations of Benton Baker Chrysler Jeep, as well as Benton Baker Buick GMC.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'll, I'll speak to some things and then Brian, or Charlie, fill in some other things, too. But the first thing is the zoning change request. So, I didn't, there may be, I thought there may be a screen that would have some.
Okay. We have it.
You have it. Okay. All right. So, currently, the property, there's technically two properties, but there's three different zonings on those properties. And partially, the request is to clean up the zoning so that, you know, that the one use as the one zoning being the commercial zoning, which is the only zoning, I believe, that fits a car dealership. So, I think that's pretty simple and straightforward as far as the zoning request goes. The special land use in site plan request is, well, the special land use is because the car dealership requires special land use. But the plan is that we would basically take the building that's there now on the property, that would eventually come down, and then we struck a new 15,000 some square foot new car dealership, Buick GMC, and then all the improvements that go with it. So, large parking lots, displaying cars, and customers come, and we do landscaping, utilities for the property. And we would be closing off the entrance from Main Street, because that's probably going to be a requirement from MDOT. They'd like to reduce the number of, yeah, of entrances along, along Main Street. But then, we are proposing to have two entrance drives off of Pleasant. Currently, it's off of Pleasant Street. It's pretty wide open right now as far as, it's almost undefined, and then there is one more, like, entrance, main entrance. So, we were proposing to kind of reduce that and make it two distinct entrances, which would help with people coming in, but also, you know.
Kyle, on Main Street, then, are you going to have one entrance there or none?
None. None on Main Street. So, yeah. And a couple other, I guess, talking points would be, it is a car dealership, and the idea is that we want to move on, either drive by or see the cars. So, we did propose landscaping along the front, but, you know, we tried to make it so that it was landscaping that wasn't too obstructing the cars, but also looked nice. So, we did our best to do that. I think it's a little less than what the zoning requires, but that's kind of like where we're coming from as far as trying to get there, but maybe we're not quite there.
True.
But, those are my main points. Talk about, Charlie, do you have maybe any more?
Sure. You know, obviously, the building that we're currently in is old and maybe needs a repair, and it was tied to, we reevaluate whether we ought to boot the property, the facility outside of town, staying here, and we've opted to stay in town. Town's been very supportive of the dealership, and we want to be more supportive of the city. So, we've gone to, you know, building a nice facility, same time trying to stay neighborly, you know, in a small town, I've owned this town for over 30 years, like, to get an idea of the culture of the town. We're trying to limit very much traffic, as far as trucks and that type of stuff on Pleasant Street. So, as far as deliveries of new vehicles and that type of stuff, they'll be remain to be unloaded on the north side of the street, where they'll be parked behind the building, that type of stuff, like they currently are. So, we won't have any semis, unloading carriers, or that type of thing on Pleasant. We'll have a truck one time a day, usually somewhere between 11:00 PM and 3:00 AM, that would be parts deliveries to the facility. We get those overnight. It's usually a smaller semi, not a full-length semi-type thing, that they back in, unload their racks, and they're gone, type of thing. So, really, to see the traffic, it'll be a much better flow. Quite frankly, as we all know, entering M21 these days is a bit haphazard to anybody's health, trying to get across the street and that type of thing. So, alleviating that drive is probably for the best, and the whole result will be to remove the current body shop, which will become into the north side of the company. That's because that's where the other drive will go, is basically through the middle of the current body shop. So, you know, multi-approach, you know, multi-steps. Looking forward to, you know, putting a great project, and, you know, if you're into the city, making it look a little better than what it currently has.
Thank you. Questions? Any questions?
So, are your car sales will be on one side of the road then?
No. So, actually, so we're going to flip-flop the sides. So, currently, new cars are on the north side, used cars are on the south. So, we're going to flip-flop.
Just worry about getting them run across there.
Yeah, it's, yeah, someday, we'd, we'd, we'd jump, we'd need a tunnel or an overpass or something. But the bulk of our, you know, everything on the south side of the street will be new cars and everything, or new cars, yeah, and then the north side will become used cars, as well as body shop will be moved to the north side of the street.
Any other questions?
So, just your showroom be on the south side?
Showroom and service. So, it'll have 16 bays of service repair. So, all the service and new car sales will take care of, will be taken care of on the south side of the street.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Stay close. We may ask questions as we go along. This is a public hearing, so we, we will have public input as well. But obviously, we will ask questions as we go through, so we'll try to lump them together if we can. Andy, you want to lead us through?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, we're going to break this review into, into two parts. First part, I think we should, we'll look at the rezoning. I think on the agenda, we have the rezoning as a separate item on the agenda, so.
Yes.
My suggestion is, so I, because it's the same applicant, I rolled it all into one longer-than-usual staff report. So, we'll walk through the rezoning criteria. You can make a recommendation on that, and then we can move into the special land use and site plan review of the development application, and then you can take action on that if you'd like. So, as Kyle said, speaking about the zoning now, this is a little bit of an unusual situation in that there are three different zoning districts that are, that apply to two properties. So, the westernmost property is 746 West Main, has two zoning districts on it, most of it is zone C3, but there's a little corner on the southwest part of the site, zone R2. I'm not sure why it's drawn like that. I assume that at some point, that was a residential lot, probably years ago, and the zoning, which has never changed, when those lots were combined, is my guess, but it's not particularly relevant now. And then the east property, which is 728, I think, that is zoned industrial presently. So, they're proposing to combine those two into one parcel, and Kyle is correct in that in the zoning ordinance, auto dealerships fall into the category of an opener business. Hence, opener businesses are only permitted in C3 only by special land use, so that's why we have the application in front of us here. So, when the, when the planning commission is looking at making a recommendation to the city council with respect to a rezoning, there are some criteria that are outlined in the zoning ordinance in 2205 AC6, and there's just three standards, so this won't, won't take too long. The first standard asks if the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the goals policy and future land use map of the city's master plan, or if conditions have changed significantly since the master plan was adopted, and if the zoning amendment is consistent with recent development trends in the area. So, to tackle that first item first, if it's consistent with the goals policies, if you future land use map of the master plan, the simple answer to that question is yes. The master plan shows on the future land use map, those parcels are located within a future land use category called highway business. So, kind of auto-oriented, general commercial types of activities have been anticipated and planned for that location. And then along the same lines, you know, I don't think conditions have changed significantly since the master plan was adopted in this area. This particular facility has been there for, for quite a while, so I don't think there's a change of conditions that would necessitate the rezoning, just something moving it further into compliance with the master plan. And in this case, it also happens that it is consistent with the desires and objectives of the public. There are B asks if the zoning amendment is compatible with existing or future land uses in the vicinity. And so, in the vicinity, it's kind of an interesting spot. There's a mixture of industrial, commercial, and residential uses. As you guys know, most of the commercial uses are along West Main, generally west of the railroad tracks. There are some industrial uses to the east, and residential uses are to the south, which is pretty typical, that we have this kind of strip commercial along Main Street, and then you have residential, single-family homes, for the most part, to the south, that initial commercial property along Main. Again, looking at future land uses, there's kind of a mix in the area, single-family mixed use and multifamily. Again, this specific property is in that highway commercial designation or highway business designation. So, for this property, a similar kind of use exists now as was proposed in the future. So, I do think that this site, if approved, would likely represent an upgrade to that area, and would be generally consistent with the master plan and with existing or future land uses in the vicinity. Then the third standard, if the site is capable of accommodating all uses allowed by the zoning change, considering existing or planned public infrastructure, streets, sewers, et cetera. So, what this is asking is since it's, while it's, it's kind of hard in this instance to separate the application from the rezoning request, when you're entertaining a rezoning request, you should be thinking about not only what that person or entity wants to do on the property at that time, but let's say hypothetically, they just, you know, disappear in a couple of years. You still have a C3 property there, so you need to ask, is everything that could possibly be allowed in C3, does that make sense for that location? That's really what you're inviting with that. And again, since the balance of the property, the majority of it is already zoned C3, hence the plan for C3 uses, it has, it has utilities on the site, it's already developed, so I think, again, that this property is capable of handling, you know, the wide variety of uses, the C3 zoning district, and from this. So, those are the only three standards for rezoning approval. So, at this time, Mr. Chairman, I think it would be appropriate to open the public hearing and hear public comment, and then the planning commission can enter to the rezoning request, and I would suggest making a motion on the rezoning only at this time. And I would also note that you can't, if you're inclined to adopt it, you can't put conditions on that adoption in this case. So, if you think it's okay, then just the motion to that effect would be fine. If you have concerns about that, then we should talk about those prior to making the motion.
Thank you, Andy. I will open up the public hearing at this point. Is there any discussion from the public on this? Yes, sir. Please come on up, state your name and address, and give us your comments.
My name's Bobby Murray, 204 Brook Street. My property is adjacent to 728, but they're looking to rezone from residential and commercial. I understand, thank you so much for staying in the city. Definitely, this is a great thing we need to have here. By being adjacent to it, obviously, it's concerned me because there's woods there now, wildlife and all that stuff. I understand property sets have, one of the key things that I'm worried about, though, is the light pollution migrating across the property. Is it light pollution? Like Ziegler, even Ziegler went LED, went across those, and it's blinding coming across it. So, that was one of the things that I was really concerned about, is the light pollution migrating across the property lines when you, I put it up, because I'm sure you're going to have, you do now, you went to the LED now, so it's pretty bright now, and just where did we start to approach more and more of the residential and Steiner Manor and stuff like that, the impact that'll have. Also, you know, the runoff and stuff like that is going to end up happening on the street, what the plan is for that, how do we get some of that risk, removing the woods, I would assume is the plan, and remove the woods and go right up to the street, something that, I mean, still, it might breed up, and I don't know if that's something to consider or anything like that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Bobby.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions, either Andy or, and the applicants, or the speaker, Bobby?
When they did their other dealership, the Old Bennens.
Yes.
They, those issues were addressed at that time, too, for those homeowners. And I believe you guys were very diligent about making sure the light didn't pollute, and they, they really did do a good job over there. They also, they couldn't take their kebab and go home corners, go find cars, so we eliminated that out there, and we'll probably do that here, too, so.
And no loudspeakers.
Yeah, no loudspeakers, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
And was there a tree line across the back?
There was, and we also had them put on a fence over there at that point. There was also some trees, I think, that were planted, but generally, I mean, all of those things were done, so. And those will be addressed.
Across the property, I think, a tree line or something.
Right. Right. Yeah, and then that will be addressed as we go into the actual site plan and things of that nature, as well as the lighting and that nature. But as far as the rezoning itself, is there any questions? Do I have a motion then to rezone this to the C3 general business district?
I'll make that motion.
And support?
I'll support.
And is there any discussion? Sue, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cavaller.
Yes.
Commissioner Chambers.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schraven.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Thank you. So, it is, that goes to the city council, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, Sue will take care of that as far as scheduling and all of those kinds of things. Thank you. Next one then would be the site plan review. So, and I'm going to open the public hearing, sort of, yeah, the public hearing on, I'm trying to hit the right one. Public hearing for the site plan and special land use for 746, 728 West Main, and I'll open the public hearing. Andy, would you please give us your remarks?
Sure. So, assuming that the rezoning that is approved by the city council will have, now a parcel that, once combined, will have a total area of about 3.2 acres. And what's proposed here, as Kyle mentioned, in the opener business, our auto dealership of accessory repair facilities, including a 15,700 square foot building and a new car key slash display lot. So, getting into the, to the site plan review, this is a corner lot, so it has two lot lines, and how we measure those things are a little different from, from normal. However, in all cases, they've satisfied setback requirements, the building needs height requirements, lot coverage requirements. Also, Matt knows that lot coverage does not include parking, that's just the building structure. So, we don't have any concerns as far as the dimensional requirements go. Site development side, we'll talk about landscaping in a minute. One of the things that we did notice is that they are closing the driveways on, on Main Street. That is something that I also would have expected MDOT to ask you to do. I don't know if you've had any contact with them yet, but in our experience with other applicants in the city, whenever they have an opportunity to close a driveway on Main Street, they have exercised that option, always anticipate the same thing. So, frankly, I was happy to see that they have just taken that step already on their site plan, and they've put that in there, because I think they are correct in that MDOT will ask that to be closed. One thing that we did note is that the northern curb cut on Pleasant Street is within 100 feet of intersection, but that's existing, so I think you can approve it as it's presented. However, in the, if this was a brand-new development and had never been done before, the land use wouldn't allow a driveway to be within 100 feet of another intersection with roads. If you don't have too many turning movements, very close to that intersection, that can be.
Andy, let's ask, let's ask that question, because I think Kyle addressed that in the opening remarks there. As you stated, I think, the, that opening is, goes on forever, and I'm assuming you're going to bring that closer into compliance or somewhere away from an intersection. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, right now, it's pretty much open from the intersection.
All the way back.
Yeah, pretty much all the way back.
To the building, I should say, and the building.
So, I mean, and now, we're going to define it, so there'll be a 30-foot entrance. I mean, it flares out, so it'll still be open, but it'll be.
Less than what it is.
Less than what it is now. It'll be more defined entrance.
And I assume further away from the Main Street?
Yeah, it, yes. I mean, it, it starts, the curve or the radius starts probably where, right now, where it starts, but then, you know, you've got a 25-foot radius before it comes into the main drive, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry. Okay. So, with respect to landscaping then, so this, again, this is a corner lot, so it has some additional landscaping requirements. There's the principal lot line, which actually, in this case, is on Pleasant, has 200 feet, linear feet, and on Main Street, there's 437 feet, which gives us a total of 639 feet of frontage, which equals 21 trees and 64 shrubs, which will be required for frontage landscaping. They propose 16 trees and 45 shrubs, so as Kyle mentioned, I, and I, I guess it's, you know, logic that there's trying to, you know, kind of balance between having an attractive streetscape and also be able to display the inventory. The zoning ordinance does allow for the planning commission to waive or modify landscaping requirements, if the applicant has kind of demonstrated a good general willingness to comply with those. A couple other remarks I would have with regard to landscaping is that there needs to be a 10-foot setback from the sidewalk, which is shown, and again, that's going to help a lot. We ran into the same thing with the other Benton Baker, where previously, they had, we're right up in the streets, taking out another sidewalk sometimes. Having that, that little extra 10 feet between a parking lot and the inside of the sidewalk makes a huge difference for people, you know, walking on the street. They don't have cars, and they're like, and it's not quite so cramped right there, so.
It's nice.
Yeah, so that will help. The other comment that we had here is that they have not proposed any interior landscaping on the interior of the site. So, again, if the zoning ordinance requires more parking areas containing 20 or more spaces, that landscaping islands and ratio of one island per 20 spaces are required, and there's 247 spaces, so that gives you a dozen islands that should be in here, they've not proposed any. So, again, we ran into the same issue with, with other applicants in the past, and so, I mean, that's something that I think as the planning commission, if you are comfortable with what's proposed, you can approve it as it's proposed. If you would like to see some additional interior landscaping, you could certainly ask for that as well. Typically, with interior landscaping, some of the challenges are, aside from inventory that they're storing on, on the site, there's also concerns related to Trump movements, snowpiling, things like that. Not saying that those are things that you have to, you know, let them do whatever they want, that's some of the, some of the logic, I guess, that is, that is proposed at times. So, I think that's where the, of the commission is going.
Andy, can you go over the first paragraphs there, which applies the residential district in the south?
Yep. So, we say here that the property above the residential district in the south, so it offers required in the form of a 6-foot, 6-foot privacy fence or landscaping containing at least some evergreen trees. They've got eight 5-foot tall white pines along that R3 property that's south. There's also like seven existing pine trees proposed for preservation along the R2, which is also to the south. So, again, there's, if you look at the landscaping plan on, oh, sheet number, on, on sheet L1, so you could see on the southwest part of the site here, kind of near Pleasant Street, there's, those are the existing evergreens that we're referring to, and there's a series of white pines planted along the entire southern border of the property, except for what's adjacent to the carport. So, you know, again, I think there's a, the question is whether or not, in your view, this would serve as a sufficient boundary. White pines do get big and can certainly serve as a screen, but it might take a while for them to get there, and 5-foot white pines aren't that big. So, as this is presented, it would form an effective screen right, although it would take some time for those to grow and get, get larger. So, again, if there's concern, especially, you know, with respect to when they operate at pretty close by, it certainly require a, like a 6-foot privacy fence, at least from, you know, where a house would be and head back. You could require, could require it along the entire southern property, if that was something that you're inclined to do. You know, there's a carport back there, so again, you know, if it's important, take into account what you're screening from. Certainly, it's, it's well within your, your authority to ask for additional screening on, on any of those properties, especially when you've got residence, and it's important to consider those things.
I think on Pleasant Street, there's only the one house that's a bloody.
Correct.
And then the, the carport is, is back there, and then between that, there really is nothing else back there, nor could there be, frankly, at this point.
Yeah, I mean, there's, so on, on the opposite side, on Brook Street, there's, there are a couple houses in there that would be, you know, on the, off the very southeast corner of the property, but there's not a lot. I mean, there's, the, the main center part of the site where the building is, and the main span where it shows the existing carport, there, there's nothing else there. There's, carports and driveways. There is a, there's a building, there's a multi-unit building right there, but immediately adjacent to the property is a, is a, is the carport, and then further to the south of that is the existing building. And you can see how I hear you along my staff report on the first page, kind of the right. And you can see how I very well on my staff report on the first page, kind of the layout there. So if you were to propose some screening, I think it would make the most sense to do it adjacent to 131 Pleasant, along that northern property line of 131 Pleasant. You could certainly consider some along, you know, near where that carport facility is, and then maybe on the very southeast corner of the site, southeast portion of seven twenty-eight. It would perhaps provide some screening between that and 204 Brook. So again, it's, I'm not sure if it makes sense to have intermittent fencing, but if you do that, you could require just a more dense, you know, layer of vegetation there, you know, with some evergreens or something.
And more could be a six-foot privacy fence, just all the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Except for, currently, there is a fence on the private property, and there is probably fifteen foot of vegetation in between where it is. It's pretty dense, and then you run down, once you get past that property, there really is nothing going further, except for the carport, which is the back end of the carport, so it's not even, you don't see it when you drive in. There is one unit at Snyder Manor that is relatively close, but that's probably another twenty-five foot away. And granted, it is summer, it's full foliage right now. I'm not sure what it would look like in winter. But, and those pine trees are big, I mean, they're, the existing ones are, they are big. I guess my initial, when I looked at it, in fact, I went back there today to look at it again because my initial thing was, yeah, it's probably, doesn't need a fence. And I think the more smaller pine trees that could be planted, probably the better because it would take, you know, more of the look away. I'm not sure that a fence does anything. That's my opinion, you know. And I'm, I'm fine with whatever the commissioners decide here, frankly, but there's quite a bit of vegetation there.
To me, it was Snyder Manor that, that runs north and south. So you've got the carport here, and then you've got north-south.
Yeah.
Once that's all opened up and that becomes a dealership, there's a lot of light gonna be, and headlight, that's gonna come through. That's why I think we're just better, you know, it's better just to...
Put a privacy fence all the way through and...
And problem solved because then those people are now gonna be exposed to something that they've never been exposed to, so try to soften it up a little bit.
And that's what we did with the other...
Yeah, same thing.
Again, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to think here what makes the best use of it.
Well, then if they plow snow into their fence and break it, that's, they're not gonna be pushing snow against a carport or into a tree line or something.
Well, they couldn't, yeah, they couldn't get through the trees, I don't think.
No, I wouldn't say couldn't.
To be consistent though, to do the six-foot privacy fence all the way would be the consistent.
Is that what we made up?
Yeah.
That's what you're matching?
Yeah.
So the way this first drawing looks, there's a zone of tree removal, and there's a ten to fifteen foot swath along the southern, ten to, fifteen to five foot swath along the southern boundary. Whereas it looks like it's vegetated right up to the, you know, property boundary of the area photo. Is the intent to leave vegetation in place there and then just augment with the additional five-foot white pines? Or is that really gonna be all stripped out and just put back? I mean, just 'cause you have a lot of existing vegetation there, then if you're really honoring a fifteen to ten-foot buffer, you'd be, you know, just go take advantage of those already in place.
I think we wanna leave those trees there.
Oh, yeah. I'm just wondering if that's truly the intent, because it seems, that seems like out of line with the landscaping plan, where they make sure, you know, planting five-foot pines in that area.
So, as the intent, I think we're just trying to get to, is to clean it up to a couple feet of the property line? Clean it up to the property line? Are you gonna leave a ten-foot buffer, five-foot buffer? Because when you look at your one plan, you're doing this...
On C1?
Yeah, on C1, there's like, you know, if you look at your scale, it's about fifteen feet on the southeast corner and down to about five on the southern boundary. And it's white, the symbol is white, so it doesn't mean tree removal. Just north of there, it means tree removal. So is that...
The intent is only to remove the trees necessary so that they can do the grading and, and and the work, you know, to build the parking lot. But it's hard to say, you know, if there's a really big tree, you know, right there, that's just inside the grading limit, it's gotta go down, it might appear that it's all clear, you know. But the intent is, you know, if there's some, if there's trees and vegetation close to the property line, we don't have to get there, you know, with that, then we'd leave it.
More buffer in the back?
Yeah, I mean, you're just gonna be planting five-foot pines and open for them to grow.
Yeah, so that...
Anyway, so you might as well just leave what's there in the fifteen-foot swath.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you've got, you know, probably forty or fifty feet or so of trees, and that's gonna get reduced substantially according to this, so be aware of that.
Right, for sure. I just thought it was interesting that it stops from short of the property boundary, so...
Yeah, you probably can't answer what green, how much room they have to clear, that twenty-foot setback.
I mean...
How much trees can be left?
Right.
You know?
Yeah. I mean, to be, to be hon, I mean, majority of those trees are probably gonna have to come down. I mean, it's, looking at the grading plan, it's close to the property line. So, once you get further to the creek area, that's when you've got a little bit more space. But from the building section, you know, over, behind the building, there's not a lot that would be left.
I think, Marty, your suggestion then of doing the six-foot privacy fence along the property line, which would be behind the street, on the, what would that be, the south side?
South side, yeah.
That assures whatever trees that can be saved are saved and whatever you can't.
Correct.
And the plan as many white pines as would be appropriate for that area. Seems to me to make the most sense.
The dumpster is back there too, so you have to...
Right.
Might just put it all the way back across.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if you're gonna do it, and it can't, it's gotta go, how far back from Pleasant Street?
Back to the start of the house.
Yeah, so it would have to be thirty feet.
Thirty feet or so off of Pleasant Street.
Off the right way, that was where the fence would start.
How close can it get to the creek then?
Well, it could go right up, I mean, you could take it right up the corner of the property almost. I don't think we have a specific setback for the creek. So you could take that, you know, as far back as you reasonably could to, you know, protect the neighbors.
I think in being consistent with what we've done in the past and to eliminate any concerns, I think we're better off doing it that way than going from thirty foot from Pleasant Street to as far as it can go around the property line.
Yep, I agree.
Any other thoughts?
Do you have any contribution?
Pardon?
This is Chris Miller. I live at two ten Maple Street, one of the neighbors. And just wanted to, you know, contribute to this discussion. I'm also the president of the Grand Rapids Amateur Astronomical Association. And the topic of, well, both the concerning of privacy and of the control of the light are both of interest to me because, you know, during the wintertime, the lights from that lot currently at seven, you know, at seven twenty to seven forty-six are actually, because of the way the lights are angled, it actually is, you know, very strong, yes. If however, the new lighting is installed the same way it is down at nine thirty West Main, that is at the other Benton Baker lot, that lighting is done very well and would, you know, actually conforms to the ordinance about keeping the light shielded and keeping the encroachment on neighboring properties to a minimum. The installation of white pines is actually, this is, I consider that is a good suggestion because again, these evergreens, of course, are going to be there during the winter, but it will take them a time to mature. So I think that having some of the, some portion of the trees left on that property for the time being, frankly, personally, I'm not, you know, if you were to ask me as a neighbor, do I want, do I need a privacy fence with the new dealership, you know, the remodeled dealership? And my feeling would be no, my contribution to that. Because I think that if it is, again, the landscaping is done professionally and smoothly, it's not like we have a lot of, you know, privacy from light, you know. Seeing the cars lined up, maybe, you know, but for me, mostly, it's about, you know, controlling the noise. I mean, having the trees there is a sound absorber for the noise that comes off of Main Street. And, you know, it can be, if the lights are, you know, it can also help keep the light onto the property. So I think that, yeah, a combination of, maybe an optimum is all three, the combination of the privacy fence, the planting of the new pines, and leaving some portion of the existing trees there is the route to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
And that is basically what we're proposing, so...
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. And we will cover the lighting here in a little bit, so we'll, and if you have further comments, you can certainly do so, okay? So you've got that information, correct? Now, the front of the car dealership, the north and west side of it, as far as number of trees and things of that nature, and also the parking lot, any discussion on that?
Yeah, it came to mind, wanted to reveal as much as possible, cars and stuff, and I keep thinking of the Range Rover dealership on Twenty-Eighth Street, how they used like decorative rocks or something. And I don't know, I've read the definition that there's green, there's trees per linear foot, and I just thought, oh, maybe you could make some kind of a rock landscape that looks really professional and instead of the extra trees or something. You can do a lot of rocks, big rocks, you know, and even as a display, like the one on Twenty-Eighth Street, they use more of a natural item to demonstrate or display their cars.
Well, I think they did a good job of building the dealership, going and landscaping that all out. That was the same issue we had there too.
And...
I think the unresolved worked out really nice. It's clean.
Yeah, I would agree. I think they did a nice job there. The extra ten foot away from Main Street really makes all the difference in the world.
It does.
It gives a nice, clean definition. And, you know, they don't need a bunch of trees in the middle of the car dealership lot. I get that, I understand that. I'm fine with both conditions of not having as many trees as are needed and also not filling in the parking lot well. Any further discussion? Okay. I think we'll take a vote on this all at once again?
Yeah, so when we go, so we haven't started going through the actual standards.
Yeah.
We're just kinda talking through some of the issues.
Yeah.
Before we go through the standards, can I just clarify the conditions on the landscaping from my notes here?
Sure.
So, we're talking about adding a six-foot privacy fence, which would begin thirty feet off of Pleasant Street, running along the northern border, northern border of 131 South Pleasant, and basically continuing that all the way across to the eastern edge show of, what's that, seven twenty-eight? Over the, yeah, with the far eastern of the carport, that's what we're... And then everything else is okay, as it is, correct?
Keeping the white, the new white pines, keeping the existing?
Okay.
Yeah, keep as much existing as they can.
Yeah, because those are nice trees. I mean, there really are a lot of nice trees there.
Yeah, well, particularly, maybe this drawing is it all, you know, where it's fifteen to twenty-five. Or there, maybe it's five to five, it's not too tough, but...
Right.
Yeah, that southeast corner, looks like, we'll get strong.
Do other trees need to be along Main Street? Or do the, is there a certain amount of trees that need to be along Main Street? Or have they shifted some of those from the, from the front then to the back?
Correct.
Yeah, so, so the ordinance requires one tree per, one tree and three shrubs per thirty feet of front on Main. And so those, you can, you know, allow something else if you want to. And like I said, they're, they're a little short here, but, you know, but again, I think as long as the planning commission, if you're comfortable with what's proposed, I do agree that, you know, they've made a kind of quick faith effort to improve the landscaping along there, so you can accept this as is presented, or you can, you could count vegetation from other locations to compensate for that. But that, I mean, they're probably not gonna get all the way there in terms of what landscaping requirements or the ordinance are because there aren't any proposed in the interior part of the site. I mean, it's a major shortage of trees, so I do think that if you're, if you're good with what's proposed along Main, I think I would, you know, we could stick with that, and then, you know, that would, that would help the streetscape a fair amount.
Right. We would have, I think sixteen trees is what they're saying, instead of twenty-one, so...
Well, fine, I just didn't know if they, I'm sure they want those trees at front, but we want more trees in the back.
Right, yeah, yeah, exactly.
But we can keep it, I mean...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, our goal is to mirror the Chrysler Dodge deep story.
Right.
It's nice, you know, flowering planting, flowering trees, that type of stuff. We like to be proud of our facilities.
Yeah, all in all, it makes sense.
All right, just a couple more issues here, or isn't it issues, just topics. So the next one is lighting. And so they have submitted photometrics with the site plan. The zoning ordinance requires that all light would be one-hundred percent cut off and downward facing, and light poles can have to be at a height of twenty feet. Further, the ordinance also requires that not more than half a foot candle is cast onto adjoining private property. There's only a couple spots on the site plan where they exceed that at the property line. Primarily, that is a little bit, it's actually just along Pleasant Street, and they exceeded it a little bit along Main Street. When we're talking about adjacent to existing private property, there are very little areas where they would exceed point five, or a couple spots on the very southern boundary, they're point seven. And there's a couple, there's a spot adjacent again to that property on Pleasant Street where they're like zero point six.
So is that a case of focusing them?
It could be. I mean, I'm not an illumination engineer, but certainly either through focusing them or, you know, a slight relocation of the light poles themselves, you know, just moving it over by, you know, a little bit, might make that...